If you have a cell phone, if you'll put it on silent or vibrate for us, we appreciate it. We're in a small space, so if we keep the noise level down, that would help folks hearing the conversation that's going on. At this time, I'd like a motion to call the Broadway Town Board into order. Motion by Mayor Protenville, second by Commissioner Bill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're in session. Chairman Parks?
Call the Board of County Commissioners to order.
Stand for the invitations, all about the public religion. Lord, thank you for giving us another day in this great country we call home of the free. As these two boards come together tonight to serve our community, we ask that you lead us to use our resources wisely and well, and to represent those who have given us this task and their trust. God us to represent all members of our community fairly, to make decisions that promote the common good. Lord be with our military men and women as they serve in faraway lands, protecting and defending the freedoms and liberties we exercise here tonight and every day, without fear of persecution or harm. Watch over them and return them to their families and a grateful nation. Lord, as trusted servants, we seek your blessing on our deliberation and on our efforts here tonight. May we act wisely, and may we listen before speaking. May our efforts tonight make our community a better place for all. Lord, we ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. If you didn't get a copy of the agenda for tonight, I think there's a few copies on the table up front here. We're gonna try to keep it simple, hopefully have some good conversation. At this time, I guess I need to, it was brought to my attention that we overlooked a name tag for Lisa Mentor. She is the Finance Director and Assistant County Manager for Lee County. We apologize that we did not have you in a name tag, but we're glad to have you here tonight. First of all, I want to thank everyone for coming out this evening. We always enjoy having our citizens engaged and interested in what is going on with our town. I know I'm speaking for the Broadway Board when I say thank you for all the comments and support offered recently. They are much appreciated. I want to extend a well, a warm Broadway welcome to the Lee County Board of Commissioners. I want to express my sincere thanks to Chairman Parks and the Board of Commissioners for their willingness to meet with us tonight. It is my hope that this meeting will be positive and productive for everyone. Please know that you are always welcome in our town. Since the issue of the possible changes to how the sales taxes distributed circuses last March, I've been very concerned about the impact it would have on our town. I've had the opportunity to voice my concerns at several of the county commissioners' meetings. I've had conversations with former Chair Lady Shook on several occasions, and during those conversations, some of the current and former commissioners were in attendance. During each discussion, I was assured that the town of Raleigh would not suffer. I have great respect and a good relationship with Linda, one that we had built over the last few years. I had the utmost confidence and faith that Linda would do her best to make sure the town of Broadway was made whole. Obviously, with her sudden departure, coupled with four new members on the Lee County Board of Commissioners, I became concerned again. In no way do I mean any disrespect to the currently Lee County Board of Commissioners. With such major changes and new faces, I just was not sure where we stood anymore. As the elected representative for Broadway, I felt it was imperative that we inform our community of these potential changes and their impact. We're just a little town of 1,200, so every now and then, we have to make some noise in order to get heard. I look forward to building a strong relationship with each of the members of the Lee County Board of Commissioners. So please know, I offer, if I offended anyone, I hope you would accept my sincere apology. Thank you again for coming to Broadway, so that our board can express and discuss our concerns face to face with you. I'm optimistic that it is truly the Lee County Board of Commissioners intention to keep the town of Broadway from suffering a devastating loss of revenue. I hope tonight, we can get some assurance from the county that you will keep the town of Broadway whole going forward. If we can get that vote of confidence from the Lee County Board of Commissioners, I know I, for one, will feel a lot better, and this could be a very short meeting. In fact, we could be at home in time to see Jeopardy. Again, thank you for coming tonight. Chairman Parks?
Thank you, Mayor Andrews, and City Council for inviting us out. It was dear, it'd be a pleasure to come out and meet with you. We respect your concerns, and we do want to come to a resolution, positive resolution, and we anticipate a fair and positive, productive meeting this evening to resolve these issues. And I would ask each individual to be respectful to the other, and let each person finish their thought before speaking. And we want everyone to have an opportunity to speak and present their ideas. One clarification, please address the chair, and we'll call on the person to give clarification. This is not a session for public comments. It's a joint working meeting. And if members of the audience wish to obtain further information, my phone number's in the book. Also, my email's published, so, or, you know, call me or see me afterwards, and I'll give you a card with an email.
Thank you, Chairman Parks. All right. The first item we want to discuss is discussion on the interlocal agreements. And I think I'm gonna call on maybe Bob and John, since you're more familiar with. I know you guys have traded some emails, and maybe kind of walk us through the interlocal agreements that we do have, and some thoughts there. So whichever one wants to take the lead.
Mr. Mayor, if John would kind of start this, and there are a couple of things, clarifications, I think, that I need to make on a couple of--
The town and the county really only have one written agreement. That's tax collections. It was finalized back in 2002. It's been in effect since then. So that's the only written agreement we have. We have several partnerships and handshake agreements, and areas where we help one another. I probably summarized a couple of them incorrectly, but tried to do it based on a quick meeting I had, a quick phone conversation I had with the sheriff. So I put this list in front of y'all. Obviously, the first is tax collections. The second is economic development. We're partners, not directly through an interlocal agreement, but we're partners through interlocal agreements with the Economic Development Corporation. Animal control, I think the service we provide there is incorrect, but we do assist when asked.
Animal control, the town, our police department handles the noise and nuisance complaints. They do that on a round-the-clock basis, seven days a week. If there is a vicious dog, a vicious dog issue, a bite, or something like that, then we adopted the county ordinance, the same ordinance that the county enforces. So when we have a vicious dog issue, then that's when we call animal control. So we do handle dog running at large. We don't have a way to pick up a dog or to transport a dog, so that's when we call animal control.
Right. And I don't think there are a lot of pickups down here, trying to get that information from the sheriff. You know, they kind of group your calls with ours, so they'd have to go back through individually and pull those calls out, so it wasn't something that they were tracking.
And most of this is an noise or nuisance call issue.
Police dispatching, town staff dispatches weekdays from eight in the morning till five o'clock in the afternoon, and then the county dispatches in the evenings and on the weekends. The sheriff and the town have a mutual aid agreement where we assist one another when needed. Our fire inspector conducts fire inspections down here. Probably the most time we spend is at Broadway Elementary, which is our responsibility by statute anyway, so.
Let me mention on the fire inspections, and Mayor can clarify this, but as chairman of the Fire Advisory Board, I think the fire inspection is, charge is built into the district fire tax.
That is correct.
And we are a member of the fire district, so the fire inspections are handled as part of what we pay for that. Jonathan, may I back up?
Yes, sir.
To mutual aid. The sheriff and the town do have a mutual aid agreement, and I will expand that a little bit. The sheriff has asked that our officers be sworn as deputies. We have two that are sworn now. We have two that are waiting to be sworn. We're just the formality of that. He requested this, so as I understand, the deputy that covers this area has from 87 at Olivia to Deep River Road. So in doing that, if he's tied up and there isn't any mutual aid close by, our officers will go to Swan Station Road or wherever they need to go. And then if they make an arrest, they have arrest powers out in the county. So this is, this is something that sheriff has requested, and we have been more than happy.
And it's been a good, good relationship. Chief Hennessy and Sheriff Porter have been great to work together with each other, and I know Sheriff Frank's been a big asset to the town of Broadway. When we have a small, four-man department, I'm gonna take an opportunity to brag on our chief. He does a heck of a job. We got a, we got a deal when we got him from the county, because we got a police chief and a good detective. So our police chief does a great job, so.
We have a habit of training good people. We don't directly provide planning, zoning, or building inspection services to the town, but we do partake in a contract with the city, and the city helps provide those services down here. Yes, sir?
Also, we do pay the city $8,000 a year for planning and zoning, GIS, and for the building inspections. So all of that is paid to Community Development. GIS really is an issue that we, we don't use very often, but Don Kay has been very helpful. If we need maps for Iowa funds or that kind of thing, he generally can do, he can generally do that. But, you know, that's on an as-needed basis. That's not something that we, but we are paying the city $8,000. And this has been in effect at least since 1991, because that's how they arrived at the amount, was the town had all of the ordinances codified in 1991, and they went back and looked at the amount of time that was spent on that, and said, "That's gonna be your fee." And then the next year, we probably did not use them, hardly any. But it has grown into a fair and equitable price for what we get from Community Development planning.
And that takes us down to Jay. I just listed that, you know, we do have a library here in town, and, you know, for my board's consideration, I don't, I don't think anybody here tonight probably knows that the county by contract provides maintenance assistance to the Broadway Optimist baseball fields. So during baseball season, we line and do other things to the field and make them playable. I think that was it. Got it all? Are we happy to answer any questions, or since Mr. Stevens has been around a lot longer than I have, he can probably answer it?
Does anybody have a question for John, or the County Board regarding the interlocal agreements?
I have a question for Bob. The, that fee you mentioned, that $8,000 fee, is that done by interlocal agreement with the city of Sanford?
Yes.
Is that on contract?
Yes, we do, we do have a written interlocal agreement with the city on that.
And is that renegotiated every year, or is that just been in perpetuity?
No, it is renegotiated every year. Bob Ridgeway and I talk about it. The negotiations basically are, "You're gonna lower this this year, aren't you?" And he says, "I'm not gonna raise it," and that's kind of what--
How has that, how has that fee changed from '91 to the present?
It's the same.
So you've been paying $8,000--
$8,000 from '91 to now.
So you haven't seen the escalation based on their internal costs?
Um, no. Now, that--
I want, I want your negotiator to come work for us.
Well, let me say, Commissioner Womack, we, at the time this was, was done, I know that the town board, and I wasn't here in 1991 as town manager, but I know at that time, there was a lot of angst on the board that they were really getting it stopped too. But as it came along, it was kind of a, you know, the graph kind of came into play with what was right and what, you know, what we should be paying. And the, and the $8,000 now, with them doing public hearings or requests for planning with, for instance, the Walmart Express coming across the street, they handled all of those issues, so.
That's great. Anybody else have any questions relating to interlocal agreements?
Tell me about the maintenance at the ballpark.
Well, with on the Optimus Club, the deal we have, they have the Broadway Optimists, I stress that, is the Broadway Optimists, an arrangement with the Lee County Parks and Rec that during ball season, unless it's changed last year, they come every day, they drag the infield, line the third base and first base line, and cut the outfield grass during ball season. Optimus Club is responsible for any maintenance outside of the ballfield itself, and any maintenance on the building, so they provide someone to come down and every day during ball season to do that.
And it is, the agreement is with the Optimus Club, not with the town, because we have nothing to do with--
The town of Broadway provides Broadway Optimists with water at no charge. That's the kind of arrangement we have with the ball park, and then we help them with the parade.
And for the new members on my board, we provide the same service to the Northview Optimists as well.
And let me say, the Tiny Toss program is a fee-based program.
That's correct.
Any other questions?
Hearing none, I guess we'll move to item number two, which is revaluation update. County Manager Clumpton has a PowerPoint presentation.
Before you go to that--
Yes, sir.
How long has it been since these letters of agreements been gone over and renegotiated?
We only have--
Such as tax collection.
There's only one, and that was 2002.
So all this other--
So that needs to be looked at again, because I think that was outdated and really hasn't been totally utilized correctly. Part of it's our fault, but that needs to be relooked at.
You were referring to the fee?
Yeah.
The 1%?
Yeah. But again, you know, that's something that we need to discuss and get that updated, because that's one of my goals, is, is to get all of our letters agreement updated.
And Chairman Parks, let me say that, you know, if the county tax office, and they do us a good service, and our collection rate is 97.1 or whatever, but if, if it takes 2% to collect our taxes, then we certainly don't mind paying 2%. So--
See, I don't think, I don't know that it would take that, but it's just something that we need to bring up to date and sit down and take a look at. At least, we probably have the figures on that to get it up to date and make sure we're doing it properly.
But if it costs 1%--
And again--
We also would like for you to charge us--
All right.
He's negotiating with the cell phone.
These other things that we have are more or less like handshake agreements on animal control and police dispatch. I don't think any of that's in writing. We might need to put that there, so people have something to go back to refer to. You know, I don't know. I may be gone tomorrow. Good Lord may take me home. But anyway, so, just so that, I found that anytime you have some agreements, anytime you get somebody, all of a sudden, you, and everything was by handshake, you don't know what, what those agreements were. So to me, it'd be far better if we put them-- Can you and John work those out? I know with the city, we decided to do, or two on, three on each board, would work through them. But if you guys could work them out, since these are rather simple, that would be good. Right? You okay with that?
Yeah.
All right.
All right. Item number two was revaluation update. And like I said, I think County Manager Clumpton has a PowerPoint presentation. And for the folks who are sitting on the front, you may have to get a kink in your neck to see it. They have a slideshow, and Charlie and I are gonna move, because we're afraid the screen will fall on us, and we don't want to be on the front page of Sanford-Harlem, that the chair and the mayor fell out at the meeting. So for the members up at the table, you have everything in front of you here. And also, for the city, for the town council members, I put information about the revow publication that we're generating, put in the Sanford Herald, some information about, from the school of government, about the revenue neutral rate, how to calculate, calculate that, and also information about the change and how vehicle taxes are gonna be collected. And, you know, it's gonna be a big change for, for our tax department. It'll also be a big change for, for anybody that's receiving revenue from the state, because now it's gonna be an interlocal, I mean, an intergovernmental transfer from the state back to y'all. It won't be part of your levy. And as we get into the discussion about how to calculate sales tax distributions based on the levy, the vehicles actually could, could affect that as well, and be one of those issues on, on how to calculate that going forward. So it's a big issue. It's also a big issue for your taxpayers, because now when you go get your vehicle tag, you'll have to pay your taxes at the same time. So no taxes, no tag, starting July 1st. And that's a big change, because you just be able to get your tag and then wait about four months and pay your, pay your vehicle taxes. So actually, the county and the town will have a little bit of a windfall in next year's budget, estimating about two months of collections as during next year, everybody's taxes kind of roll forward. The people at the end of the year who normally get their tags, say, in, in May or June, where they would have paid those taxes in the following fiscal year, will now be coming forward into the current, into that fiscal year. So be a little bit of upbody, and we're gonna have to sit down and calculate how much that will be for, for all the boards. So we should collect more revenue. They should have a higher collection percentage with that, the state should. And that 2% collection fee will now go to the state instead of, instead of the county on vehicles. Just, just wanted to let you all know that. In the, in the PowerPoint, talk about revaluation and revenue neutral. Over there? You're gonna have to do this one. Sorry, I can't read and then look behind me at the same time. This is a little awkward. So I'm gonna let the finance officer and Assistant County Manager handle that for me. But GS 15911 defines the revenue neutral rate as the rate that is estimated to produce revenue for the next fiscal year equal to the revenue that would have been produced for the next fiscal year by the current tax rate if no valuation, revaluation had occurred. And why that definition is important is because each year, you have natural growth or natural decline in your tax base. So it's just not taking what you generated this year versus what you'll generate next year, but you had to have that growth component added to your calculation. So the statute also instructs that the revenue neutral rate is calculated as follows. Determine a rate that would produce revenues equal to those produced for the current fiscal year. Increase the rate by a growth factor equal to the average annual percentage increase in the tax base due to improvements since the last general revaluation. So that's the, the growth factor, and adjust the rate to account for any annexation, deannexation, or merger, which in next year will not apply to any of our jurisdictions. So just the first two will apply for us. Y'all have any annexations?
No.
I think so. So this is the calculation for the county's revaluation and revenue neutral rate. The last revow occurred in, on January 1st, 2007. And as you can see, there's the assessed value at that time. It increased almost 600 million in the last revow, where we started in the 2007, 2008 budget year. Going into the next revow, we're projecting a $60 million increase in our tax base to 4.8 million. Last year, as you go, work down to the page towards the bottom, the last year prior to revaluation was 4.7 billion, at a tax rate of 75 cents, estimated, our estimated levy was $35 million, almost 36 million. Next year, our base will go up to 4.8 billion, and to get the same amount of revenue as last year without growth, is a 74 cents tax rate. And the increase, and to take in account for the growth, it's basically a wash at 75 cents. So the revow is not gonna generate really any growth in revenue for the county. Any questions on the counties? We've been working with Bob on getting his estimate for your revenue neutral rate, and, you know, we're still implementing our numbers on that, so. 81 and a half million dollars tax base--
Last year.
Last year. Right now, we're looking at a decrease. You're showing, you're showing a decline right now, as we work through it. So obviously, that's another gap. If the home base of what we're seeing coming down, I mean, the increase you're seeing is on the commercial side, right?
Right.
Which puts the town at a disadvantage, because we don't have a large commercial area.
That is, that is correct. And the city, the Sanford, they have considerable growth in the, in the commercial tax base, and industrial tax base as well. And in the unincorporated areas of the county, we saw some of that growth as well in the industrial areas, but we saw quite a decline in the residential areas, and that, that is the reason for our, you know, the city's tax base is estimated to be up 100 million. Ours is up to 60 million, and the difference is the decline in the residential values in the county. So it's been a difficult, a difficult time in the, in the real estate market. So I feel for anybody that's in the real estate market in this, in this room.
Do we know when the revow notices will go out? I know you guys were working on the timeline.
Revow notices will be mailed February 15th, so everybody will get them the week of the 18th. And then immediately, the appeals process can start. So if you have an appeal to come forward, and basically, it gives you 30 days to appeal, gives you notice about from the time you receive it. So basically, we'll know about the middle of March what our appeal numbers are looking like. And, and so as we get closer into the budget process and move through it, we'll be knowing more and more about the potential impacts. So across the state, the revows the last couple of years have generated a record number of appeals. And obviously, if you get a lot of appeals, it takes a long time to go through them. So, but, you know, on June 30th, we have to have a budget in place, and we have to have our best estimate on the tax base at that time. The Board of Adjustment, I mean, Board of Equalization and Review, according to their calendar, hopefully, they'll have all, most of their work done by the end of May. So June 1st, we'll, we should have a pretty solid number at that time. Any questions on that? All right. Sales tax distribution, North Carolina General Statute 105-472 is the--
All right. Sales tax distribution. North Carolina General Statute 105-472 is the disposition and distribution of taxes collected is the prevailing statute. According to one, according to that statute, the secretary shall divide the amount allocated to each taxing county among the county and its municipalities in accordance with the method determined by the county. There are only two methods to distribute unless approved by the legislature. So the first method is per capita, which is our current method. And the other is ad valorem. The Board of County Commissioners shall, by resolution adopted during the month of April of each year, determine which of the two methods of distribution shall be in effect in the county during the next succeeding fiscal year. And the resolution must be delivered to the Secretary of the Valley within 15 calendar days of its adoption. For information purposes, here are the counties that are currently using per capita to distribute their sales taxes. And on the next page are the counties that are using ad valorem. There's one county in the state, Onslow, that does a blended that was approved by the legislature. They do 60% on per capita and 40% ad valorem. And that was a deal that was negotiated between the legislative local delegation and the municipalities and counties to come to a resolution there. So all parties there seemed to be happy because it provided some stability because the county was changing it just about every year to their advantage there. So it was kind of a volatile situation. Page 12 is our estimate of the sales tax distribution. This estimate is a little bit different than the other night. In talking with Mr. Stevens and his staff, we overestimated the impact to them the other night. I think we had $143,000 as the change.
Yeah, I didn't get any sleep Tuesday night or Wednesday. So thank you.
Well, you have a smart town manager there. He
We know that.
He caught, he caught a mistake that we had made. And so the correct number is $104,740 if the change was made from ad valorem to per capita. The county would receive an additional $1,461,000. $925,000 of that would go to the county. And $536,000 would be split among the fire districts. And you see the impact to the city of Sanford. They would lose $1,374,000. But the downtown business district would pick up $17,000 for a net combined effect of 1.35 million due to the change. We just, on page 13, so that you can project your own impact. For each jurisdiction, one cent change on a tax rate, up or down, produces a $465,990 effect to the county's budget, a $217,000 effect to the city of Sanford, and an $8,000 effect to the town of Broadway. Page 14 would be the impacts to the fire districts. In some of the other ad valorem counties, the fire districts chose not to take the sales tax and instead signed agreements with the counties to be held harmless in the property tax. And so they turned the sales tax over. So the fire districts as a whole would have to make a choice as to whether they would want to see this reduction or turn the revenue over to the county so that the county could reduce the property taxes an additional penny.
How much would you, without, how much are you looking at reducing the county rate if you got the 900 to start with?
That's two pennies.
Two pennies if you got the other part from the fire performance.
That'd be another penny. For a total of three.
So we drop from 75 to 72.
Right. Just off of that, there's been some discussion to go further than that. So for the county. Y'all in the Cape Fear District? Do you allocate to them? Or is the town charged?
We pay the rate.
You pay the rate?
Yes.
All right. One of the things that, you know, as staff, we felt that we needed to tell our board about, and obviously, wanted to tell you all about is that by going to per capita, from per capita to ad valorem, it makes the situation more difficult to project future revenues. If the county drops our rate from 75 cents to 70 cents, and then the town has to raise theirs 12 cents, and the city raises theirs 6 cents, all our levies are changing. And including the fire district's levy could change as well. So, you know, we're making a projection. The projection you just looked at was our projection for the impact in 2013, 14. It's much more difficult for me to make a projection beyond that point because I don't know what your board's going to approve as a levy. I don't know what the city council's going to approve as a levy in the city. And then, you know, you have, now you have differences with the fire districts and what levy they're going to do in the downtown business district. So we go from having three variables to about 12, you know. And population is a little bit easier to predict. So that makes future calculations for sales tax distribution easier. So from a budgetary standpoint, it becomes more difficult.
So outside of getting the extra 1.4 million, what is the advantage if you can't do any projections down the road?
Well, we still, I'm going to show you another sheet that would, that would show that even if you all made all those changes, what the net effect would be to the county. So that one would be on page 16. Page 16 is if, you know, just changes to the fire districts. We can skip 16 and go ahead and go right to 17. So what we assumed here is that the fire district's tax rate would change and their levies would change, and the 6 cents increase with Sanford and a 12 cent tax increase for Broadway. And as you can see, we went from a, the county went from one, almost one, went from 1.46 million down to 1,860,000. So the change to the county was roughly $380,000. And obviously, the fire districts go, goes down as well. And then taxes end up going back to Broadway and to, to the city. So, you know, that would be our, you know, obviously, that's the, you know, the range there from, from the projection in 2013, 14 to the projection of 2014, 15. That would be the range. So you go from, you know, basically, a 2 cent decrease to 1 and 1/2 cent decrease for the county if we don't have the fire district's sales tax. As you can see, it, you know, changes quite a bit. And then, you know, you can do that every year. Whereas, it's a little bit more steady with the per capita. I'll be happy to answer any questions about the report.
Anybody got any questions for County Manager or something?
I want you to finish asking the one you started a minute ago.
Oh, I'm having too many senior moments now, so you're going to have to remind me.
Well, it's going to talk all these problems, extra budgeting. I thought things were working pretty well. Do we really want to do this? What will, what will be the benefit besides half the people will get a 3 cent cut? The other half will get a much bigger raise in their taxes.
Are you directing that question to John?
Whoever wants to answer.
Whoever wants to answer.
I'll tell you one of the big benefits that we'd have. Number one, like you said, is a 2 or 3 cent per hundred tax on the properties. The other is, is we have numerous things that we've been pressuring, getting pressure from all of our citizens about doing. One is expanding the community college, continuing education building. One is for the schools, about building another grade school. Our county's already, where we're paying out $8 million a year in debt service, and another 3 million, 3 million of that is interest. If we hadn't accumulated so much debt, that interest would have paid for continued education building for cash in three years. But these are things that affect all of us. We want to keep a library in place, but it costs money. You know, we've got other issues with health department. We just had to add another person to the health department, plus three temporary people because they're changing all of the computerization. And state is complaining because our people aren't able to serve those people fast enough. And I know a lot of those are from Broadway. A lot of them are from Sanford. A lot of them are from in the county. It serves everybody. So we have to look at overall requirements that we have, that the state and that the federal government has levied on us. A lot of it, unfunded mandates that we have to take care of. That's part of our problem, is taking a look at the overall budget. It's not trying to do anything against Broadway, not trying to do anything against Sanford. It's trying to do our job as county.
Mr. Chairman, if
Go ahead.
I suppose my question would be, and all that is, I agree with that. We, the county needs those things. But it doesn't sound as though any of the sales tax is going to be put toward those. What you're talking about sales tax doing is going to a tax reduction of 3 cents for the county residents. So this money doesn't sound as though this money is going to be going for that building at CCC or extending water lines. This money's going to be rebated as a, as a
Tax refund.
We'll do a tax refund, but I don't think all of it will be used for a tax refund. We're hoping that we have enough. And we still haven't made a decision. And we haven't come to a complete understanding of how the states could impact our budget this year. Until we have all those figures, we really can't make a decision, Bob. So.
When you get those figures.
They said we should have somebody in the April.
We're, the board kicks off their budget process March 15th. And we're hopeful that, you know, we can give them better estimates of where we're going to be, you know, with the county's budget and any bills that go to the legislature and how, and how that could affect our budget as well. You know, as we all know, that anything can happen between, you know, March 15th and June 30th at the legislature. So, but, you know, the decision for the sales tax distribution has to be changed in April. So, you know, our charge, you know, from our position, staff's position, is we have to try to give the board the best estimate we can on March 15th of what's going to happen so that they can have all the information to make their decision, you know, at the beginning of April.
I guess, yeah, my concern, and I've voiced it several times, that, you know, this amount of sales tax that we're losing, you said 12 cents. And if we're going to have a loss in the property value overall in the town, which is probably somewhere, possibly another penny, so that's about 13 cents. So, I mean, if I have $100,000 home, you know, right now, I'm paying about $1,190 a year. But if you cut yours 3 cents, the town has to raise 13 cents, I'm paying 1,290. So if I live in the town of Broadway, I, you know, either going to see a tax increase of $100 a year, or I'm going to see loss of services. So, I mean, I'm having a hard time just making that work out in my mind for the citizens that live in Broadway.
Mr. Chair, if I could comment on that. The presumption I think is being made is that, is that the only option the town of Broadway has is to increase taxes. And I'd like to clarify that no one on this board, the Board of Commissioners, is suggesting or inferring or even, or even supporting the fact that you would want to raise your taxes. The whole idea for, at least some of us on the Board of Commissioners, is to try to reduce taxes on all citizens of Lee County. And we don't, we don't accomplish that in, either in the city of Sanford or the town of Broadway, if we reduce county taxes and then you turn right around and offset that back with an increase in town or city taxes. That doesn't accomplish that in. And it doesn't give the tax relief we're trying to get for all citizens of Lee County. And we are genuine when we say that's what we want. I don't think there's anybody on the Board of Commissioners who will see anyone's taxes go up this year. In fact, the reason we wanted to do the revow this year was to lock in lower property values. And I think we're going to be successful in doing that. A lot of these smaller, smaller income or smaller value homes, I mean, Mary's smiling back there. I think she could probably tell us that a lot of these, these older homes are probably going to go down in value on residential properties. And so we can lock that in for a few years and, and actually give some tax burden relief back to some of these citizens, particularly the fixed income seniors around Lee County. Now, there's another part to this. Whenever you're doing budgeting, you would not be responsible to your constituents if you didn't look at every source of revenue you have and trying to optimize that source of revenue. And that's what the sales tax distribution discussion is all about. It's optimizing at the county level, which serves all citizens of Lee County, optimizing what revenue income or what income we can get into the county coffers so that we can meet our statutory obligations to all citizens. And where we don't require certain funds, then we can give tax relief back to the citizens. So we're not taking one penny more than we have to from citizens. And so that's what our purpose, that's what our intent was. There are also other options for those that are impacted negatively by the sales tax redistribution. There are other options, one of which, which is obvious, is to cut services. Another one is to look for a replacement of services. And, and that's got to be done delicately. But, I mean, there are, there are inter-local agreements that you can enter into with the county. There are other service providers that can provide. There are more efficient services that you can turn to. So if you were to analyze your budget in the same way we're analyzing our budget this year, identifying every possible option that we have to reduce costs, whether we do it by contract or in a local agreement or through some other replacement service, that's what we're going to be looking at this year as we go through our budget. So, for example, let's say that in the public safety arena, that there's a big, a big line item cost for you and you couldn't afford to provide that. Then maybe you look to the sheriff to extend his coverage into that area to provide it. Or maybe you look at, at, you know, contracting out that, that service. Anything you can do to try to, to reduce your cost in that area. Or looking, looking perhaps at your own budget to identify other things which are not as critical so that you can keep essential services going. We got to do the same thing. When we get a loss of revenue coming from the state, you know, we can, we can go back to the state and appeal to them. But typically, what they do is they say, we got to do what's right for all of the state taxpayers. And so we then reanalyze where our priorities are. And we make adjustments in stride. Our revenue stream changes year to year. And the legislature reserves the right to change on us every year what they do to us, which, you know, with just lottery funding alone, has millions of dollars of impact on us every year. And we don't control that. But what we do is we adjust in stride with those changes that come out of the legislature. So that's, I think what we're suggesting is we're not, we hope that the, that the city of Sanford and the town of Broadway do not increase their taxes. And that they, that they will negotiate with us in good faith to try to find alternative means to sustain essential services so that, so that taxes go down for all citizens in Lee County.
Commissioner Walmsley, I appreciate that. But we go through our budget line item by line item every year. The town manager and myself, and then the entire town board take a session and go item through item. And I think you wouldn't find a whole lot of fat in our, our budget. We look at everything because we have a small budget and are trying to provide the most we can for our folks to maximize the 44 cents. The tax rate has gone down, and we've been able to hold at 44 cents for the last three or four years. You know, 10 years ago, it was 53 cents. But we've cut our budget and we've trimmed our budget. And, you know, I'm sorry, there's not $104,000 to go trim without affecting services. I'm not advocating that we raise taxes. That would be a last resort. And I think I'm speaking for my board to raise taxes because we pay taxes also and know the impact it has on our citizens. But we're talking about affecting services here of law enforcement, maintenance, to try to get to this $104,000. And it's going to be tough. I mean, our citizens are going to get a 3 cent tax break from the county. But they're either, most likely, going to see a loss of services. We go contract with somebody. That is still a cost that we don't have any extra reserves to go contract with anybody. I mean, yeah, we got a $500,000 reserve which we could go through real quick if another tornado comes through and decides to come down Main Street Broadway, or something happens to one of the sewer plant or water lines. So, I mean, to say that we haven't gone through our line item, I think we're very frugal with our money in trying to maximize it. You know, this decision to offer a tax break to everybody, I applaud. But it comes with a cost to our citizens in Broadway that they're either going to see a higher tax or loss of services. And we're talking about $104,000. That is a drop in the bucket for a $60 million bucket. That is a drop in the bucket for a $60 million budget.
Mr. Mayor, I think you missed one piece.
I think we're not, you know, one of the things I want to make clear is this county is not looking for increasing our reserve or fund balance, number one. And we recognize that Broadway's been very conservative in your budget. I've been to some of your meetings, heard some of the meetings and budgets. It's not that at all. I think some of that could be accomplished to help you mitigate some of what you consider losses through interlocal agreements, and that we would have to research and look at that. So like I said, we're trying every way that we can to work with you. And that's all we're asking from your board, is that we work together to see what the best thing is. This is a new time, economics and everything else. Our food stamps are increasing, our welfare's increasing, unemployment's increasing, things that we have to address, and a lot of that's coming from right here. And we're having to address it. We can't do it by ourselves anymore. And so we're having to look for ways that we can benefit all the citizens of Lee County.
May I say one more thing?
Yes, ma'am, Commissioner Welch.
Did I misunderstand you, Chairman Parks, or did you not just say a few minutes ago that while we have all these needs in the county, another building at CCC, another school, you weren't sure that this money would even go to that?
We would like to try to reserve as much as we could to go to that, but the first issue at hand is to try to keep people in their homes. And that's what we want to try to do by reducing the taxes. If we have anything left over, then we've put a hold on auto capital improvements this year to give the college and the schools time to look at their space allocation and see if there's other ways to work some of these issues. Broadway School is already overcrowded, and they're saying, "Hey, we need to build a new school building." We don't intend to raise our debt limit anymore because we're paying too much interest on it now. All these citizens' taxes are going for a lot of interest that it doesn't need to be. If we can do that, but there again, we've got to look at all the figures to see what we can do. That's the reason we are doing this planning up front to see, but we may have to take a different direction if it's not working out right.
So let me make sure I understand. The plan, as is right now, is to change how sales tax is distributed. That was the instructions given to county manager at your December meeting, and unless, you're not going to know your figures until sometime in April, but you've got to take a vote the 1st of April to do this.
Yes.
So your plan is to change how sales tax is distributed in Lee County?
One of the reasons that we gave that notice up early back in December is because we're required by law to do so. We have to give it early that we're taking a look at it. The legislature requires us to do that. But to say we've actually made the decision yet, we haven't.
Say it again. You have made it, you haven't made it.
We've not made a decision yet, and we look at all the figures.
Well, and let me say concerning the budget and looking at it line item and looking at what we spend, we don't have any fat. And I defy anyone, if the county wants to send Lisa down and look through our budget, if she can find any fat, you know, we have looked for it for years and have not been able to find it. Eight cents, I mean, $8,000 produces one penny of revenue. So if we buy a pickup in this town, it's 2 cents on our tax rate. We are operating on a small budget. And we didn't ask the county commissioners to come down and save us, we're doing just fine. But if you take our sales tax or our, a large share of our sales tax, it's going to be devastating. We aren't talking about cutting things out of our budget like the parks and recreation budget. The parks and recreation budget will be cut, but our parks and recreation budget is a contribution to the Optimist Club Christmas parade, the lights at the Veterans Memorial. We can cut the lights out at the Veterans Memorial. But we're going to have to lay off a policeman, that's 25% of our police department, which in turn puts a larger burden on the sheriff's department, because the sheriff's department is going to have to come in here. I talked at length to the sheriff department in the past, not to Sheriff Carter, but I think I'm going to find, get the same answer. We talked about, we used to have three officers, and when we had three officers, there were some officers that ran 24-hour shifts. They'd go home and turn, put the phone on transfer to their house, and if there was a call, they came out. And I talked to the sheriff's office, and they said, "We don't have enough money to fund another officer to patrol this huge area as it is, and we certainly don't have enough money to patrol the town of Broadway." Our people want 24-hour, seven-day-a-week, 365-day-a-year police protection. And we're able to provide that now, but if we're cut back, 33% of our public works department is going to be cut. We don't have the three people in public works. That means we're going to stop mowing the grass on the rightways. That means the water and sewer department is going to take a lot of time, and things in town aren't going to be picked up. Leaf and limb pickup, it's going to be nonexistent. People will start burning them in their yards again because we don't offer it so the state will allow that. We have nine full-time employees and one part-time employee. These nine employees are hard-working people. They are paid below average. The North Carolina League of Municipalities has a survey every year of their pay rates for towns our size. Every one of them are under, below average, ranging from $1,277 to $11,000, below average. But they come to work and they do a good job. Now, they work second jobs. They farm, they raise chickens, but they come and they do a good job. We don't, we can't turn our backs on these people, and we're going to have to lay them off. Their times are tough, and we're going to have to make tough decisions. But we're going to have three policemen, and somebody's going to go lacking. And when somebody's broken into and there isn't a policeman on duty, people, the citizens are going to want to know why. When the grass isn't mowed, or the lights at the Veterans Memorial, or the grass down there, they don't get mowed, people are going to want to know why. And you can say all you want to say about the town is not, that you're not responsible for the town raising their taxes, but it's a cause and effect. And the cause is, you're going to cut us 14 cents, 13 cents plus the penny, and the effect is, we're going to have to cut services.
Mr. Manager, let me ask you the question. Earlier I said there are multiple avenues that you can pursue to try to replace essential services. You mentioned that you had spoken to the sheriff's office, but not the sheriff himself. How long ago was that, that you talked to the sheriff?
Well, this was some years ago.
All right. No, wait a minute, let me finish. I would enjoy you to have that conversation now with the sheriff and find out what services he can provide to the town of Broadway, because as I understand it, your lion's share of the delta would be in public safety. In other words, the change could be made up in public safety. And if you were to engage the sheriff's office in a discussion about your overall public safety requirements, you might find some relief there. I'm not suggesting you will, but I'm saying that you might find that. And that's, all I said earlier, and I emphasize this, is that we keep talking about, "Well, we've got to raise taxes or lay people off." That's not your only option. I think you have other options that you haven't looked at yet. And I think before we have further conversations after tonight, that we ought to explore those other options so that we don't misinform the public, that there are other things you can do without laying people or without losing essential services. Laying people off is always an option, we've been through that. The county has laid a number of people off over the last few years to meet budget obligations. We didn't have any other options at that time. I think the town of Broadway does.
Amy?
Well, I listened to the whole discussion, and at the very beginning, Don made the point, excuse me, Mayor Andrews made the point, that, you know, the sheriff had requested, Jim, that he has the Broadway Town Police Force deputized because he needs help covering this area. I think it's crazy to think that he's going to be able to help out.
Have you talked to the sheriff?
Well, no, Jim.
Well, then don't say it's crazy, because I think it's an option. It's not crazy if you haven't talked to the sheriff in a little bit already, don't say it's crazy.
Fair enough, but fair enough. But I've lived here my whole life, and I've been here, but we didn't have adequate law enforcement coverage. And we've had things happen, and the nearest deputy is 30 minutes away. And that's unacceptable for these people. And for us to do things that will either trigger raising their taxes or having them have to reduce services and put up with that, that's unacceptable, Jim. We're not being as leaders.
I totally agree.
Okay. We got some others down here that want to make some questions.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm just going to expand on what you were talking about, about the sheriff's department. They got one man that's going to cover half the county and expect to help us, you can forget. Now, I haven't talked to the sheriff either, but I intend to, but I don't think that you, that's not even, that's not illogical.
Mr. Chairman, let me say, I talked to the sheriff Tuesday night at the forum you had in Sanford, just speaking to him as he came by, and I said, "Tracy, we appreciate all the help you give us." And he said, "Well, you give us more than we give you with those deputies, having your policemen deputized where they can go out and make arrests, that helps us more than it helps you." So that came from the sheriff. Now, granted, Commissioner Womack, I haven't spoken with the sheriff about this, and I will, I will do that this week.
Good.
Well, I was just going to say, maybe the county needs to look at some other alternatives for reducing their debt rather than what they're doing. If they're big on looking at all the alternatives, they just said the reason, they've got too much debt, so maybe they could figure something different than causing a situation that would require us to raise taxes, and it will unless we just want Broadway to shrivel up and die.
Jimmy, did you have something that you wanted to?
Chairman Parks, I just sort of like put the shoe on the other foot. We're struggling trying to come up with a deficit of 10% of our budget. What would the county commissioners do if all of a sudden Mr. Clumpton told the county commissioners, "Y'all are going to lose 10% of your budget for next year"? How would you pursue that?
We did that three years ago, didn't we, four years ago?
Four years ago, we did that.
Not only that, but the last two years, several of us have met with each department chair and gone line item by line item, and if they couldn't justify what they were asking for, we've had them cut it. We have, our social services, I'm on the social services board, social services, they have 500 hours of overtime that they can't even take. It's paid in comp time off, they can't even take it off because, like I said, the state's down on them for not processing food stamps and unemployment, things like that. These are things that affect all of our county people. So those are things that we're having to look at right now, Jimmy.
I'll agree, but you know, in our board meeting Monday night, a statement was made about us trying to conserve. And a lot of times, this is the way our employees operate, and Mr. Stevens pointed this out. One of our employees may go to the hardware store and buy two bolts to repair something, and if he only needs one, he takes the other one back. I mean, that's how close we operate. And, you know, if we lose 10% of our budget, I don't think there's enough avenues for us to pursue to make it up. We'll have to raise taxes.
Well, what I'd like to propose is that maybe part of your board and our board sit down, and once we get some true figures, just go over them all and see if there's ways that we can address those.
Okay, let me understand, you're not going to know the figures until after you take the vote, basically?
No, we're going to look at figures before we take a vote.
We're going to give them our best.
Yeah, they're going to give us the best estimate. It may not be totally, but it'll be close, yes.
That's what I was going to ask. I mean, I'm still mixed up on this time thing here. I know I'm not as smart as some of you anyway, but you say you've got to have your figures, you've got to have your vote by the 1st of April, and you're not going to get your figures until sometime in, did you say June?
We will, we'll probably won't have the final figures till then, but we'll have a good idea by March 15 about what it should be. Now, it may be a percentage of it that we take a look at, but we'll have, well, we will have started the budget process March 15.
Well, why do you vote? I guess it's by law, you have to vote on it.
Yes.
No, sir, if you, if we leave it the same way, we don't vote on it.
You what?
If it's left at per capita, you don't vote on it.
Because it's already there.
It's not voted on every year, if you're leaving it the current way. So if they...
That seems like a good idea to me.
Sir, what?
If they're going to change it, they have to vote on it.
Let me ask this question.
You won't have any problems?
Let me ask this question or propose this, and I've made it in my opening comments, is that, you know, I received indication, or, you know, maybe I perceived them wrong, I don't know, that there was a desire by the county commissioners, or not the county, there was a desire by someone on the county commissioner board to hold Broadway harmless. What is wrong, doesn't have to do anything with figures, that can come later, for you guys to say, "Hey, we will make you hold going forward." I mean, how hard is that? We're talking $104,000.
I think you end up in some, you know, we have to, we have some legal issues involved with just making that blanket statement. If we make the town of Broadway hold, the city of Sanford's going to say, "Why aren't you making us hold"? So, you know, there are some issues there that we have to work through on the shared services, and one of the reasons we talked about the interlocal agreements is that is a way to go through that.
Okay. Is there an interest on the county side to do that, or is it just to go ahead, "I'm going to take the sales tax, refund the 3 cents back on the county rate, and where it falls, it falls, and town Broadway makes do with what we got"?
Well, I think, you know, Bob was there the other night with us, and I think what he heard was is that we intend to look at all the figures before we make a decision. And that we'll work with the cities the best we can. That's the reason we appointed board members to go in and work over every interlocal agreement that we have with the city. We just said, we just voted that Bob had said that Bob and John would work through your local agreements, and they could discuss some of the avenues that we would have to make you hold.
Say that again.
I said we'd discuss at different avenues that we could take to make you hold.
So are we to understand that the statements that have been made in previous meetings by individuals on the board that Broadway would be, and this is a direct quote, not be held, what am I trying to say here? Would be held harmless? That was a misstatement?
No. We will try to work, like the statement was, is we will work every avenue that we can to try to see that you are.
Well, that wasn't the statement, Bobby.
Well, that's a statement I've made.
Okay.
And just to clarify, I have also made statements similar to that going back a year with the mayor, and the intent was to do exactly what I was explaining earlier tonight. That is, to sit down with the city of Broadway, the town of Broadway, identify every possible avenue so you don't have any suspension or any termination of essential services, that alternative mechanisms can be looked at. And that, again, that can be done through interlocal agreements, it can be done by supplementing through exchange of services that you provide today at your own expense that we... at your own expense that we don't provide that benefit the county. There are a number of things you can do that we ought to analyze in detail that can offset and then perhaps make you whole. The terms, I think, are a little loose, but it makes you whole, so you don't lose any essential services. You can adjust in stride to the loss of revenue from the sales taxes.
I think we've pretty much beat that one to death.
Excuse me, Mr....
Yeah.
Being what to death?
I don't understand. We only have one agreement with the county, anyway.
That's, at present time, yes. The written agreement that we have, but we have some others that we've talked about that we need written agreement.
That you all have thought about, or that we have?
I'm sorry.
All right. Dr. Frazier?
I've listened to everything that's been said as well. My wife says I have sinus infection, but I don't know what it is. But anyway, I'm not contagious, I just want you to know that. Maybe I preach too hard some of you, that's what...
What I wanted to say is that I've heard the comments from everyone, and I ran for
county commissioner on the premise of not seeing, let me just start from the beginning. I went home the other night. I haven't slept a week because I did not see anything about what happened to Sanford, the city of Sanford. I ran saying that we would not raise taxes on these two municipalities. That's what I ran up. And I said that we would go with the per capita and leave things the way they were. I don't think that we've had enough dialogue with any of this to say that we're gonna put this on the city or either Broadway. I think we need some more dialogue and to make sure that we make the right decision. I know that gave Mr. Clumpton privileges to go in and look at numbers, sit and bring back what he, and this is what he brought back to us. This is not concrete. But I think that we need to have more dialogue in order for us to make some decisions that's gonna be foregoing, just for us to come in here. This thing has been going on since, what, 2002? And I think the city of Sanford was 2001 or 2003 or 2004. But whatever those numbers are, we just come to 2013, and we're trying to make a decision just like that. It's just hard for us to make good decisions based on what we have. I know what we're trying to do. Nobody wants to raise taxes. I don't think that that's what we're in here for. However, I don't want to put the burden on somebody else. I said that we would be for all people. When I ran for this job, I wanted to make sure that we ran for everybody. So I'm not saying that we should not raise, but I think we ought to look at it in the sense of making sure there's fair and balance all the way through the whole city, on the whole county. And so I want everyone to know where we are here tonight. I know we're, nobody wants to give a increase, but we have to make sure that we look at it logically. And if we do that, then I think that if we can make a decision by the 15th, I'm not gonna go in and vote for you all's taxes to be raised. I'm gonna say that here tonight. I will be, I will be a turd cope, if you will, if I ran on one thing and go back in and vote on something else. But I did vote for us to see and pursue to get these numbers and see where we run. So I think that we have a lot to look at today, and before we start making concrete decisions.
Dr. Frazier, I appreciate your comments, and I think I'm speaking for our board. We're willing to meet at any time. That's what I've been trying to find out, what are the solutions you're offering, or how can you help us since March? You know, telling me that you're gonna look after us, "Don't worry." Well, like I said at the beginning, that deal with Chairwoman Shook, I felt good about, but with the change on the board, we need to know where we're at. We're available to meet. We've made every meeting we've been requested to go to, and we would be available to meet to work this out, because this is devastating to the town of Broadway. And as the elected officials in the town of Broadway, we'll try everything to make sure that we look after the folks in the town of Broadway, and nobody on this board is interested in raising taxes. That would be a last resort. But we also don't wanna have to lay off and do away with services that the folks in Broadway depend on. So we're available.
Mayor Andrews, you mentioned this twice about Commissioner Shook.
Yes, sir. She and I had a great relationship, and I had confidence and faith in her, yes, sir.
And I appreciate that, I applaud that. But do you think that we are gonna just throw you under the bus, the ones who are elected?
I don't have any...
I mean, certainly, and I think you're the only white person in here tonight. And I'm not gonna throw you under the bus. And I ran trying to help everybody. So let's not think that we're not gonna have you at our best interest. Maybe I shouldn't have said that. Take that door.
Well, I appreciate that, and our intentions are to work with the new board members and the new chairman. Charlie and I have been associating with each other the last two or three years now. But we're ready to, you know, we don't wanna wait till April to find out that, you know, we gotta make all these changes. We're ready to start looking at these things. If Jim has, if Commissioner Walmsley has ideas, I'd love to sit down with him and with our board and let our representatives from our boards, and let's see. I mean, if Lisa, the mentor or the assistant county manager, we would welcome her to come and look over, and if there's something, maybe we're missing something. I'm feeling pretty confident that our budget is about as thin as it can get, but at the end of the day, we can't live with this. It is gonna hurt really, really bad. So, yeah, we're needing help, and that is what we're asking for, is some sort of help.
Anybody else have any comments, questions?
The only thing I would say, and I apologize, when I start talking about town employees, I get emotional. But I would say this to four commissioners on that board who have come to Broadway and have campaigned in Broadway. The District Two seat and the at-large people have campaigned in Broadway. And as I'm sure, I was on the town board for three terms myself, and I understand how political candidates operate. And I'm sure at some point, when you were running, you looked these people out here in the eye and said, "If you'll vote for me, I will make sure that you're looked after." When you're making your decision and you're voting on this, please remember that promise to these people that you looked in the eye, because this is not good for Broadway, and that will be a voting campaign promise. And I'm spoken to.
Anybody else on our board? Any comments?
I just, well, Dr. Frazier.
Yes, sir.
Yes, we trust you to do what you, you know, we, I speak personally, I believe that you came on the board with the best intentions, all of you, all of you. But before you were elected and came on the board, we've been having meetings after meetings after meetings after meetings. And as that time went on, you know, our deadline for meeting budget specifications marches on as well, there's nothing political in our very real concern of being able to do what we need to do to care for the people that we're responsible for. You know, we wanna take care of our own, you wanna take care of yours, Sanford wants to take care of theirs, and we all understand that. I think my frustration comes from the fact that we just, we seem to meet ourselves to death, but we have extreme difficulty in sitting down together and thrashing some ideas out, whether it's because, you know, one of us is afraid someone else is gonna think more, think smarter, think whatever, I don't know. But this is one small county that's made up of two municipalities that we have to work together. We just, we really do have to. And that's all we want. I mean, we are already, I mean, I agree with everybody else who says our budget's about as trim as it can get, and I don't have any problem saying that to you folks that we serve, that we look at our budget every year very, very closely and have done everything we can do with it, thanks to our staff. But still, you know, we're looking at something that we really don't know what to do with because it's a bigger snowball than we can build a snowman out of. And so I would like very much that if we leave this place with a determination and a spirit of cooperation to sit down and whoever has an idea, to go through it and just see if it's viable for any of us. But it's to stick our head in the sand if we think that, should this change, that we're gonna be able to create something out of the nothing that we'll be left with. So I hope that we will be able to make some of those conversations happen. And I want to tell you, too, I appreciate what you do. There is nothing easy about it. You've got lots more people complaining to you probably than we do, but our concern is no less great than yours, not just for our citizens, but for everybody in the county, because the county folks come into Broadway and deal with all of us. But I do hope, and if there was any indication, especially when I was speaking, that, you know, that we don't believe, or that I didn't believe, that you were coming on with the very best of intentions and a spirit of cooperation, I apologize for that.
Chairman Parks, one thing. First of all, thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. It's good to see familiar faces. One of the things I always take issue with in some of these meetings is we don't get to hear from you for taking time out to listen to us. So I'll be staying around as long as you wanna talk after the meeting's over. And just to remind everybody, we have a meeting Monday night, and we do allow public comments to give you a chance to address our board need.
I'd like to echo Amy's appreciation to you guys for coming out tonight. I would encourage you to go to the Commissioners Board meetings. They have some good board meetings down there, and you need to be knowing what their, what your elected officials are doing for you.
I guess our next step is maybe we can get together, a smaller group or something, and maybe some of the brainstorm ideas you guys have for us, we can find something there. Maybe John and Bob can get a smaller group, and let's, because we need, as Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Green said, time, you know, we have got to start planning also.
Yes.
And, you know, the difference between having $100,000 and not having $100,000 greatly affects how we're gonna go about our duties as elected officials from the town of Broadway. So, yes, I would hope that, you know, maybe we can get the county manager and the town manager to get a few of us together, and let's, if there are some solutions out there that we don't see and that you can point out to us, we would be most interested in listening to.
After it all said and done, we really need to get back together as two boards to, you know, make some final decisions.
Like I said, our board is open to meet. We're willing, I think we've shown that in the past, to, you know, we always love to have you guys down here, but if need be, we can travel to Sanford. We do know Broadway Road runs both ways. So before, I guess we'll get ready to adjourn, is there any other discussion? Before we do it, the two boards adjourn, I do want to let you know that the members of the Broadway Town Board are staying afterwards, and we'll be available for any questions from our citizens. We'll be here. If you have a question you need to ask us, we will try to answer. So we will be staying after both boards adjourn. Again, I want to thank the county commissioners and the staff of the county for coming down tonight and talking with us. Hopefully, some good will come of it down the road, and we appreciate you guys having an interest in what's going on in your community to come out and be informed.
I'll be around, too.
Chairman Parks said you'll be around. Do you want to adjourn first?
Yes.
I need a motion to adjourn. Motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Need a motion to adjourn?
Come in.
Motion by Mayor Proton, second by Commissioner Bill. All in favor, say aye.